Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting of Wednesday, June 17, 2020. To order, due to the increased concern and surrounding the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will remain closed to the public. There are no scheduled public hearings and there will be no public comments, period. Live video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Camcast Local Channel 9. A recording of this meeting will also be posted in the West Bridgewater YouTube channel. Please join us in a pleasant allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so public hearing appointments, Board of Selectmen business approve the minutes of May 20th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alton, favor.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Raise, yes.
Yeah, roll call vote. Can you hear me? Yes. Marriery, yes.
Raise, yes.
Denise, yes. Okay, so moving along to be accepting the meeting minutes of June 3, 2020. Motion?
Second.
Okay, Marriery, yes. Roll call vote.
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, so voted. C, vote to reassign readers for Article 18 on the annual town meeting warrant. Okay. Dave, you want to enter into picture on this?
Yep, so Mr. Chairman, we reviewed all, normally when we assign readers, we just go in order. However, Selectman Kennyhan is on the recreational space committee. And as a result, Article 18, which is to consider the purchase of Russo property, it would just seem fitting to have Selectman Kennyhan move that. We had originally voted to have Selectman Ray do it, but again, that was just because we were doing it in order as we typically do. So I've placed it back on the warrant and if the board would like to make that change, I would just ask you to take a vote to do so.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, Marriery, yes. Roll call vote.
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, so that's approved. So voted. Approve Andrew Rosenfield's vacation carryover request.
So Mr. Rosenfield is a collective bargaining employee in the water department. The contract allows him to roll over unused vacation time not to exceed five days. He has not used three days, so he is requesting to roll over those three days.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Marriery, yes?
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, so voted. Vote on the Board of Assessors' recommendation to appoint Danielle Nielsen as full-time principal assessments secretary.
So we have two employees in the Board of Assessing Department as support staff. One is a full-time employee, the second one is a part-time. Our full-time employee left the organization last month. As a result, our part-time employee, Daniella Nielsen, because she's already a collective bargaining employee, has the ability to be able to move up to the full-time position. And therefore, the Board of Assessors are recommending that they do. I recommend that we do as well. And because you oversee the collective bargaining agreement, it would require a vote of the Board of Selectmen. So I would ask you to appoint or promote her from part-time status to full-time status. And then as a result, it leaves a vacancy in the part-time position. So we are funded for it. We would like to then go out and begin the hiring process or the advertising process to hire for the part-time person at that point.
Okay, sounds great. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Marriery, yes?
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, so approved. And also, it includes in that motion advertising the vacant part-time principal assessment secretary. And that includes in that motion.
Yes.
Okay. All right, F, water owners project manages contract to Palmeri Associates for the construction of a new salt shed at the Department of Public Works.
So you'll recall that last year at town meeting, we secured funding to remove the old salt shed that is adjacent to the fleet building. In order to do so, we have gone out to bid to hire an engineer who is going to do the following. One is, is that this firm will review the specs as to what is that we're looking to purchase and install. They will then go out to the, they will refer to them as the agent of the bid. So therefore, we comply with all state bidding laws. And then they will also oversee the project at that point. Their quoted bid was $7,675, which was the lowest that we received. And as a result, I would ask the Board of Selectmen to award the owner's project manager to Palmeri Associates.
So moved.
Okay, any questions on that on the board? Is there a motion to approve this request?
Moved.
Is there a second? Okay, Marriery, yes?
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, so voted. It's a long time overdue, and I know I'd be glad to get going on this. And before we know it, fall will be here again, you know? Okay, G, call for two full-time police officers from permanent intermittent officers list.
So the police department has been running short staff for some period of time. Both of these positions are funded. They are not additional positions. They are two employees that over the past year have no longer been retained by the town. And you'll recall a couple of months ago, or really three meetings ago, you hired or you appointed a permanent intermittent list of five police officers. So following the Civil Service Regulation, if that we are going to be looking for new officers, we must pull them off of this list. And as a result, at this point, what we will do is call for it, which means that we will post the fact that this position is open. Those five permanent intermittent officers have an opportunity to sign saying that they are interested. The police department would then do their background checks and due diligence. They would then recommend two people and bring it back before the Board of Selectmen at a later meeting for the Board of Selectmen then to make the formal appointment.
Very good. Is there any questions on that board? Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Marriery, yes?
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, that passes. So voted. Police award state accreditation.
This here is really an FYI to the board, and quite frankly, it's an opportunity to give our police department and really the administration of Vic Flaherty as chief and Tim Nixon as police lieutenant, a lot of credit. A little over a year ago, they began the process of having our police department accredited through the state of Massachusetts. Only about a third of all departments in the entire state are accredited. They only stay for five, withstand for five years, and it has to be re-accredited at that point. And basically, what you do is, is that you work with your rank and file, and you come up with policies and procedures to cover just about any case or issue that could ever occur. And then make sure they're trained. So that way, in the future, we can have extremely good processes in place that have already been approved and vetted by the state. And we train our police officers to follow those processes and protocols. It should make our police department better and our police officers better and our town better. So they did this in a little over a year. The police chief and the police lieutenant did fantastic jobs. And quite frankly, the department as a whole, every single one of them, did a fantastic job working with the administration to make sure that this came to fruition. And the state just awarded it by the town of West Bridgewater's police department, its full state accreditation this past month. We normally would have had a reception up at Andover Country Club, but because of the current pandemic, it was closed and therefore, nobody was able to go. But because they did receive this accreditation, and quite frankly, it's a lot of work, and they deserve all the credit in the world for it, I want to bring it to you as the Board of Selectmen to let you know the exemplary force that you have in your police department.
I know they're doing a fantastic job. I'd like to send a letter over there for the accreditation of, you know, appreciation we have for the work that they do.
Great. Agree, we should send them a letter. This is a lot of work they did, and they do an outstanding job on a regular basis.
Okay, so.
Yeah, Eldon, on that, I'd like to know that this was a two-step process. Last year, they received their certification, which that also took over a year. So they've been working throughout this process for a number of years. And I think this is great timing with everything that's going on. It shows that our police department is really doing an excellent job.
Well, I agree. So I hope they continue to do the job. It's certainly a tough world out there now that we live in. So I'd just like to see the letter go out to them, and we appreciate the work that they do for this community. Okay. Next one is a safe plan review with special permit planning board of contractors yard located at 586 Manly Street.
So this address may actually seem like you're almost like Groundhog Day. It was only a couple of months ago that you actually approved or you actually did a review on this property. And that's because at that time, if you recall, there was a residential house, and they were looking to do a contractor's yard in the rear of that house. They owned the house. They were not going to use it. It was just going to stay as a freestanding building. And they were just going to use it as a contractor's yard in the back, which means that they were just going to basically compile mulch and other landscaping equipment there. They've gone through the planning board process, and they have received approval for that original site plan. Apparently, this company now has re-looked at that site, and they would actually like to do, go the next level. So what they want to do is they want to convert that house into office space. They want to now build a 60 by 120 garage, which will house their vehicles in addition to still having their contractor's yard. So we'll go back before the planning board as it did before. They'll have to review parking and entrances and egress and all those other items. But because our process in West Bridgewater is that all commercial site plan review is that it comes back before the Board of Selectmen for any comments, thoughts, or ideas. It is back before your board at this point.
So does the board have any comments on this? They're expanding that they are there, and it looks like it's going to be very tribute to the business, where we're trying to get new business where they have a location and they're building on. Are you looking for a vote on this to, just if the board has any comments?
Just any comments.
Any comments?
Just refresh my memory, Dave. Are there any residences, residents around this property?
There is. So what I was going to recommend is, is that the last time we did this, your comments were, is that you want to make sure that any construction took into account concerns of noise and hours for any of butters, particularly to residential. I will tell you, this is zoned industrial. And so therefore, the residential properties are actually in the industrial area. And so I would recommend, since that was your concerns the first time, is that we probably place those as concerns as well. It has a church on one side, some commercial property on the other, and across the street, they have a couple of residential properties as well.
Right. I don't have any other comments.
Okay, Denise, you have any comments?
No, that was it.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll go to Jay, right of first refusal of 61A land at 20 Cross Street.
So 20 Cross Street currently has a house on it. It sits on just shy of six acres. It has been in 61A chapter land, and they are looking to now sell the property to an individual. It looks like this individual is just going to move into the home. It doesn't look, based on everything that they've provided us, it just appears that that's what they could do. Obviously, it could be wrong, and anything could change. But that's what it looks like. And so because it's under 61A, it does come before the town of West Bridgewater for first right of refusal. The purchase price is $400,000, which quite frankly, is a pretty reasonable price. I think these people are getting a really good deal on that property. But at this point, the three boards that have reviewed it, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and the Board of Assessors have all provided written correspondence with the intent not to recommend the town to purchase. We don't have the money, so I'm going to recommend the same. And I'm going to ask the town for, the board for its vote on the matter.
Okay, do we have any comments on that? Is there a vote to boot this? Motion?
I'll make them out.
There was a few. Yeah, go ahead.
So moved.
All right, is that him? Second. Marriery, yes?
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, that's so voted. All right, there's another one, right of refusal in Chapter 61A. Is Zero Maple Street?
Yeah, so it says Zero Maple Street because it doesn't have a legitimate address. It is at the end of Maple Street if you come down Pleasant, as it parallels Route 24. It's in an industrial commercial zone. It is owned by the Bertorelli family. It is nine acres, and they are looking to sell it for $1.1 million. The person that would be purchasing it would be converting it into a commercial storage yard, of which at this point, they said they would be storing telephone pole. So if it does become a, if it does become a commercial storage facility, it is going to have to go back before either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals in order to become, in order to get its special permit. In the meantime, the issue before us, whether or not the town wants to purchase it. Again, all three other boards have reviewed it, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Board of Assessors. They are recommending that we do not purchase it at $1.1 million. We do not have the money. And so I would recommend that we do not purchase it in asking for a vote of the board as well.
Okay, motion not to exercise our first right of refusal.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Marriery, yes, on the roll call?
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, so voted. Thank you very much. Approved 112 FY21 budget.
So under our current pandemic, it is a whole load of firsts. We are a town, and towns do not usually exercise a 1/12 budget. A 1/12 budget is where a budget is not approved within its fiscal year. And in the following year, usually it's a city, and the city council then approves 1/12 of the previous year's budget for expenditures. We expect town meeting to occur on June 29th, of which we will pass our FY21 budget starting on July 1st. However, based on the current pandemic, the Department of Revenue is requesting that all of us pass a 1/12 budget, which in essence, at this point, simply says that we are asking the Board of Selectmen to approve a 1/12 budget. And therefore, if for whatever reason our town meeting does not occur, then on July 1st, we have a legal appropriation to be able to spend money. If town meeting doesn't happen, and you do not approve this, then on July 1st, the town is legally incapable of paying any of its bills of processing payment of any kind. So I have before you, I'm sorry. So all I'm going to do is, I'm just going to ask the board to take a vote to authorize and approve a 1/12 FY21 budget. The town accounting, I will then have administrative work that we have to do. We will provide it to the Department of Revenue, who will approve it, subject to town meeting. If town meeting gets approved, then quite frankly, all this work for the 1/12 budget was all for naught. And if, obviously, if town meeting doesn't happen for whatever reason, then we would have legal appropriation authority in the month of July until we go to have our town meeting at whatever later date that happens.
So have you heard from the state on the Chapter 70 funds there, that you say something about giving us more money? Present?
So Chapter 70 is the state's aid in reference to education.
Yep.
I sat in a conference call last week with Iowa Senator, Senator Timolte, in addition to Senate Ways and Means Committee Chairman Mike Rodriguez, and then followed up by email with him afterwards. They still have not provided us any exact numbers. They have informed us that they expect revenue to be reduced at the state of Massachusetts level by up to $6 billion, which is about 15 to 18% of what their expected revenues were to be. And therefore, as a result, they could certainly be looking at a 15 to 18% reduction across the board and state aid. However, this past year, they did just pass education reform. And so it's going to be politically difficult for them not to fund Chapter 70 funds at the highest of levels. So you recall that when we passed our budget, we assumed a 10% across-the-board cut, and that's what I'm working with at this point. But to answer your specific question, Mr. Chairman, I have received no further knowledge as to what exactly the cut will be, except that we know that it'll be a reduction, not an increase.
Okay, thank you for the updated information because you've been keeping us posted. I'd like to say at this time, a lot of things went in on that budget, and you, you've worked diligently and also are office staff there, Lonner and your assistant. I'd like to thank you very much on being a chairman, and I'd also like to thank the Board of Selectmen there because I think we had a fantastic year, and we still ended up with the free meal in the stabilization plan and keep the town moving and really hasn't laid anybody off. And I'd like to do this in tough economic times. I really appreciate all the help that I had from that, my board, and being chairman of this great board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the 1/12 budget.
Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Marriery, yes?
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Communication, abortion boards, and town officials, public. There any calls? Lonner came in here. No calls. Okay, I think now unless the board, does the board have anything that they would like to say at this time?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm good too, and I'm waiting there for the 27th to remind everybody this is an election from 9 to 7 at the, at the Spring Street School. And people haven't voted, and I understand there's quite a few people that have voted absentee. And I certainly will appreciate their vote at the, at the 27th. Okay, I'll move down now to the town administrators' report.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since you just mentioned the election, real quickly, I would like to say in behalf of the town clerk, still do vote by mail. You can apply for the vote by mail through her website. She will then send you out a ballot. But because of the timing, next week, I would start to recommend that you drop the ballots off physically with the town clerk's office. Now, the town hall is still closed, so I would bring it to the drop-off box area in front of the town hall. And there is a slot for, it'll say treasure on it because that's usually where bills go. But all of our mail goes into there, because if you do vote by mail, and it comes in after the election, count. It must be received by the town clerk's office by the day of the election of June 27th. So because we're starting to get short on time, I would like to say, if everybody can vote, that's great, and I want to make sure your vote counts. With that said, first under my report is emergency expenditures and borrowing account. I'm going to be looking for a vote of the board to approve this. We do not deficit spend. First, it's illegal. Secondly, we are very good with our money and manage our budgets accordingly. However, we now have an opportunity to receive about $300,000 of grant money that allows us to be able to spend specifically for coronavirus expenditures. Revenue is now requiring that we set up a separate account, and we expend everything out of that one account and then get reimbursed into it through these grant funds. Obviously, town meeting never set up this account last year, so we never placed money into it. That means that as soon as we buy anything, even if it's for 15 cents, we would be actually deficit spending until the grant money comes in. So as a result, this is a template letter that the Department of Revenue has provided us to use, is that they are asking the Board of Selectmen to approve deficit spending through an emergency expenditures and borrowing account, and therefore allowing us to use this account. And as the grant money comes in, we will then offset that expense.
There you go. Board member, do you have any questions on this?
I do not.
Is there, Denise, you have a question?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Marriery, yes. Roll call vote.
Raise, yes.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yeah, so voted, Dave.
Thank you, thank you. Second is, is really just a whole bunch of updates. Again, we still are dealing with the pandemic. Thing is, is that we do have numbers trending down across the straight state, and they're also trending down in the town of West Bridgewater as well. An update on town properties, the library is now open for curbside pickup. Town hall, we have about half of our staff working, and we are in the process of, we are almost done retrofitting the town hall to make sure that everybody is adequately safe and protected. Do that, then all employees will be required to come back to work. And after a period of acclimation, we will then reopen to the public. Obviously, that can change depending on how the numbers change and whether or not the governor makes any final decisions. But we are in phase two of our plan. In meeting with the attorney, with the lieutenant governor, Ms. Palito, this past week, she expects that Phase 2.5 will begin next week, which is going to allow services that require one-on-one, for example, massages, nails, to begin opening, again with restrictions. And then indoor seating for restaurants will probably be another week or two after that. And Phase 3 will probably begin sometime after July 4th. So as we continue to monitor what the state does, we'll make the decisions with the staff accordingly. Friendship Park and the tennis courts behind the school had been closed. If you recall, we had closed the track. We opened it. We have now, I sent out a letter after meeting with the emergency management team, and where Phase 2 allows recreational facilities to be open. Again, making sure that there are social distancing procedures and that people are adhering to all the safety protocols, so we have posted those accordingly. One thing of note is that we are opening up Friendship Park because quite frankly, we want to keep it closed. We had put barricades up, tape up, and people were still going in, ripping the tape down and using the park. So we've decided to open it, but it is impossible for the DPW department to go there and sanitize every hour. Somebody who uses the park is a child from, say, 9 to 10 in the morning, and another child that comes in at 11 to 12. Our DPW department cannot be there all day sanitizing after every use. So we are posting a sign that says caution, area is not sanitized. That people are going to adhere to that caution. The last is, is that unfortunately, based on the fact that gatherings over 10 are still not allowed, is that we have decided to also cancel our summer concert series. Most of, in fact, every town that I'm aware of has canceled theirs. So we ran into two problems. One is, how are we going to be able to adequately police and keep people safe? And the second is, is a legitimate concern that if we had kept ours going, is that we probably would have had neighboring townspeople come in to watch and utilize ours. Instead of having the current 75, 80 people that come, we may have had a couple hundred people come, and there would have been no way that we would be able to adequately police that. So unfortunately, we had to make the painful decision to stop it and close it down. Early voting legislation just went through this past week. Was approved by the Senate yesterday. It moves on to the House now for reconciliation. It's expected to pass. And in essence, what it is, it's expanding on early voting to allow early voting for both the presidential election in November for two weeks of early voting. And also for one week at the end of August for the primary, because Iowa state primaries always held at the beginning of September. However, in consultation with clerks and the clerks association, and after meeting with Annie and Telly, our fine town clerk multiple times, it came to our attention that during this only early voting period, is that they were recommending that not only were they going to work during the week, which was customary for early voting, but they were going to require our town clerks and staff to work both Saturdays and Sundays in October and for the week in August. Understand that they already work a full week. So that meant that in August, they were going to be working close to three weeks direct with no break, no day off. And in November, they would have been working, in October, they would have been working almost a full month leading up to that election. In addition to what they're doing for the election, they have all their other duties that they have to do. And the town clerk doesn't get paid extra. She's salaried. She doesn't get extra vacation time or comp time, and she doesn't get paid overtime. Our assistant town clerk. Our assistant town clerk is a unit employee, so for over those weekends, we're going to have to pay her overtime. So as a result, on behalf of Annie in the town of West Bridgewater, I sent a memo out to the state saying that we would try to please keep in mind that our town clerk, staff, and employees are not robots and computers. They're people, and we can't expect them to work a month in a row. During the debate, the Senate actually looked to increase additional time versus just take out the Sundays. Ultimately, they did not increase time, but they did leave the Sundays intact. It's unfair because I do feel bad for Annie and Sharon and any of our other workers that may work. Some people may say, oh, just hire some additional workers, because many times we hire election workers during these times. However, most of those people are over sixty-five and seventy years old. They're not wanting to work for obvious reasons. They don't want to run the exposure of potentially getting sick when they're the most vulnerable group. So this is going to put an additional pressure on our town clerk. But because I did write the letter on behalf of the town and our town clerk, I thought it was important for the town, for the Board of Selectmen to know, so the letter is in your packet for your review. The last item was just a possible change of venue for town meeting. I've placed a picture in here. You will see that we have already set up the gymnasium for town meeting. I want to thank the crew over at the school department who have done a fantastic job. We currently have about a hundred and fifty chairs set up in pairs of two, although people can move them if they need to. But you can see that what we've done is we have pre-assembled all the tables and chairs for social distancing. What doesn't show in the picture is also bleachers that will accommodate about another forty or fifty people, again, allowing for social distance. And if we do, and if those two hundred people allowed in there, we have overflow, then we have already had the cafeteria set aside, where the cafeteria will be monitored by Marion Leonard, our past town moderator, and she will be talking by walkie-talkie to our moderator, Jason Ross. If you haven't had a chance to see it, we have placed a video in reference to town meeting on our Facebook page and on our website because we are trying to showcase and highlight to all of our residents that we're making every additional step and precaution to make sure that people remain safe, so they are willing to come to town meeting and vote on the town's business. At one time, we discussed potentially putting, changing it and putting it out onto the football field. Some residents have brought that to my attention. But after meeting with the school staff and our staff, it was just too late in the game. We wouldn't have to make, it would have been, there would have been technological issues. We obviously would have had to be concerned about weather. And as we mentioned earlier, it's already scheduled for June twenty-ninth. If that became a rainout issue, then we would have went into July, which would have had compounded issues. So as a result, we're going to stay inside. And even though some people may be concerned about inside, if you've never been to this gymnasium, it is huge. The ceiling has got to be twenty-five to thirty feet high. It almost feels like you are outside. It's airy, and we're going to make sure that we do our best to keep everybody safe. Thank you very much. That is my report this week.
Okay, is there anything else the board would like to make any comments at this time?
No, I think David did a great job preparing for town meeting the best we can.
Yeah, he done a fantastic job. He put a lot of hours in with our office staff there to accommodate this stuff. This wasn't an easy year. I mean, he was here a lot of times, very, very late to try to get this thing moving and in contact with us. You know, not only during the day, but even when we got night calls and trying to move the thing along. Thank you, Dave, on behalf of all of us.
Thank you to all three of you. Thank you.
One question, because I think, you know, it's, I can hear, suspect people will ask, if you can't have gatherings over ten, what permits us to have a town meeting? Is it that we, you made all these accommodations so we could?
So that's an excellent question. We actually did do it. I discussed it in the video that we do. And that is because the governor, in his executive order, exempted town government legislative bodies. And the reason being is that Massachusetts is, for the most part with towns, you can only pass a budget and do business through your town meeting. And so we would have had to effectively shut down every single municipality outside of cities throughout the entire state. So we would just provide an exemption. That is the only reason that we're able to meet over ten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay. Like I say, I want to thank everybody for all their involvement there. And this being, I have a motion. Union seventeen, two thousand and twenty, I would entertain a motion to enter an executive session, not to return to open session, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the police union, since in my opinion, as chair, strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. I'd like to take a roll call vote on this to go on executive session, and we would, and we will not be moving back into open session. Good night, and thank you.
Raise, yes.
Kenahan, yes.
And Marri, yes. We were now in executive session.